Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Our thanks to East Hampton Media for their assistance in broadcasting this meeting and for all that they do to bring the city meetings to the public. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conferencing application. Remote public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. This meeting will now be called to order. Barbara, please call the roll.
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski? Bill Lynch?
Here.
Tom Peak? Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zera?
Here.
All right, we will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands and nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no minutes to approve, so we will go right into public speak. And I want to remind everyone, for those who are attending this meeting for public speak portion of the agenda, please remember that this is your turn to speak, so the council will be listening but not responding to your comments in any way. We ask that you remain respectful and direct your comments only to the city council. If you would like to speak, use the Raise Your Hand feature by selecting the Participants option at the bottom of your screen, then click Raise Hand at the bottom of the Participants window. If you're dialing in via phone only, you can raise your hand by pressing *9. Please remain on mute until called, at which point you can unmute your own connection and begin your comment. Before commenting, state your name and your street and/or town if it's not East Hampton. If you find that your internet connection is slow, please remove the video portion of your connection. You will have three minutes to make your comments. If time runs out, you may finish the sentence that you were speaking, and then we'll have to move on. Thank you. So let me... Does anyone want to speak during public speak? Go ahead and raise your hand now. Well, this is going to make it easy, then. It took me longer to read it than it is to do it. Okay. All right. Then we will move on. If there's no one to do public speak, we will move on. I suppose we could go right into communications from officials, as we have a public hearing starting at 6:15, but we're about 10 and 12 minutes early. So are there any... First, I'll start with, are there any elected officials who have anything that they would like to say at this start, at this point? Counselor Zera?
Thank you, President Coniff. Just really briefly, just wanted to relay a couple things. I spoke with Marty Klein, who, as you, probably most of you know, is involved with the Pascamic Trust. They maintain a lot of trails that have been both established and now maintained by the city and are also the keepers of the John Bader Park, which abuts 50 Payson. And he had told me that there seemed to be an uptick in vandalism at the gazebo there, which actually isn't Pascamic Trust land, but does belong to another trust that maintains that gazebo, as well as the Angel Monument that I'm sure you're all familiar with. I spoke with him earlier today. He says that that group has taken a few more measures, including installing a solar light and a few other, moving their picnic table slightly so it's more visible to the public. But I just wanted to really ask the public at large to understand the time and commitment, as well as money that goes into maintaining a lot of these spaces within the city, both public spaces owned by the city, as well as some of these private organizations, trusts, et cetera, that really provide a lot of wonderful, beautiful, accessible areas for us. And so if we could just be thoughtful about those spaces and try to respect them more like they're our homes. And, you know, just really quickly, I wanted to acknowledge the events that took place recently in Kenosha. And remind everyone again that Black Lives Matter and Black Voices Matter, and that we need these voices as the nation and our city moves forward in terms of really listening about the discussions we're having. The shooting of Jacob Blake, while he wasn't, fortunately wasn't killed, has left serious repercussions on him for life. And the subsequent carrying of a rifle by a 17-year-old into an area of protest makes me thankful that this city has been thoughtful about resolutions around gun control. And before I sign off, I just wanted to ask the council to take a brief seven seconds of silence for every bullet that was fired at Mr. Blake, and just think about how we can all be better listeners, affect change, and think about how we can contribute to a discussion about policing in America. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of elected officials who would like to make a comment? Counselor Rothschild?
Thank you. I wasn't kind of, I wasn't going to say anything, but just hearing Counselor Zera talk about the recent events in Kenosha, I couldn't help but think about recent events here in our own city, in East Hampton. There's been an uptick in vandalism and harassment between, whether it's stealing of signs or harassing people because of different viewpoints. And I'm starting to see, you know, we have the Black Lives Matter sign, and we have support our local police, and I don't feel like those signs should be in opposition. And I feel like there's starting to be an opposition in our town, whereas if you're one or the other, and I'm hoping we can put those signs together in yards. There's a difference between being, speaking out against institutional racism, against the disproportionate amount of violence that Black Lives are subject to. Then, and there's, and looking at the personal police, people as individuals, you have to look at it in a nuanced way. There's institutional racism, just like we're against institutional racism in schools, but we still support our teachers. Our local police officers are, most of them are East Hamptoners. They're our neighbors, they're also our constituents, and it should not be an opposition. And I'm worried about the undercurrent of violence and opposition that's happening in our own city. So I just want us all to be mindful, to remember that we're all neighbors together, and find a way that those signs can live peacefully in our yards, side by side. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have, under this portion of the agenda, we had something that Planner Bag had added. Really, all we need to do is set a public hearing for the zoning amendment for cannabis cultivation in the business district. So Barbara, is there, do you see any problem with us just setting the public hearing? There's nothing else we need to do, right?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be. We have to have the recommendation before a public hearing can be set. You don't have to immediately set one, but it can't move forward until we get this. Now we've got it. It's up to whoever.
Okay. So then, could I ask someone to make a motion to set the public hearing for October 7th in this council? Counselor Rist?
Can this happen during Counselor Derby's report? Because I know they met last night, and there might be more information I'd like to hear.
Do you want to do that, Salem?
That's what I was planning on doing.
Okay. All right. Then I will move it to the back of the pile. Anything else from anyone? We still have five minutes?
Do you want to do the resolution under correspondence?
Yeah, I think Michael and I can get it done in five to seven minutes. So first, we have a resolution on the table for support of the Soldier's Home in Holy Oak. And Michael, thank you for bringing this forward. And the essential message of the resolution is that we are trying to communicate to Governor Baker that funding for VA services, and for particular enhancing some of the VA hospitals, is critical, that it be increased at this time to avoid or mitigate the problems we saw a few months ago at the Soldier's Home with 76 individuals dying from COVID. So, Michael, do you, would you like to say a couple of words before we launch into the resolution?
Yes. Thank you, President Coniff, for helping me get this before the city council. So the hope of the coalition is to push Governor Baker's administration into properly funding and staffing the Holy Oak Soldier's Home, due to the light of the 79, or 76, I'm sorry, veterans who passed away there. What we're looking for is a voice at the table, and we're going to accomplish that as a grassroots organization by getting the community involvement of all of our communities that we work in and that we live in. So that's what we're looking for. We're looking for East Hampton to add its voice to the coalition in support of the changes that need to happen at the Holy Oak Soldier's Home to make it a safe and viable environment for veterans who will be going into care there. And that's all I have. Be all right, any questions?
Thank you, Michael. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read the resolution in the form of a motion, and then we'll open it up. If anyone has any specific questions, after it is seconded, we can open it up. Anyone wants to ask Michael any questions? Before I start, does anyone have any objection to us voting on this resolution tonight? Okay, seeing none. Then I will go ahead and read it in the form of a motion for us at this point. So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution in support of the Soldier's Home in Holy Oak. Whereas in 1952, the Soldier's Home in Holy Oak opened and has provided care with honor and dignity to thousands of Massachusetts veterans for over 68 years. Whereas in 2010, veteran rooms at the Soldier's Home were determined by U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs to be noncompliant with uniform federal accessibility standards. Whereas in 2012, the Massachusetts Division of Capital Assets Management commissioned a needs assessment study that determined of the 278 current beds, less than 5% meet VA standards. Whereas in 2013, a design to add 120 private rooms, as well as convert existing rooms, thus creating 278 fully compliant beds, was approved by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs for 65% federal funding. However, the state has repeatedly failed to commit its 35% share of matching funds required to allow for the start of construction. Whereas in 2016, a project to create an adult day healthcare program at the Soldier's Home in Holy Oak was also approved by the VA for 65% funding. However, it also has never received Massachusetts' commitment to the 35% matching funds. Whereas in November 2017, with the support of Governor Baker and the legislature, the state approved $199 million to build a new 154-bed long-term care facility at the Soldier's Home in Chelsea, while disregarding the long documented deficiencies at the Holy Oak Soldier's Home. Whereas the lack of sufficient space and staff were major contributing factors in the rapid spread of the novel coronavirus 19 at the home, which resulted in the deaths of 76 veterans who tested positive for COVID-19. This atrocity is one of our country's worst veteran tragedies and contradicts Massachusetts' claim of being the best in the nation for veteran benefits. Whereas all veterans deserve equal treatment in Massachusetts, state-funded veteran homes to include the same living conditions, as well as proportionate funding to provide for a safe and efficient level of staffing in all departments. Now therefore, be it resolved, the East Hampton City Council urges Governor Baker and the legislature take immediate action to increase funding to ensure sufficient staff, equipment, and supplies to provide safe care and to expedite the design of a new Soldier's Home in Holy Oak to allow for the construction of fully compliant rooms for 250 veterans, including a toilet and shower in each bedroom, and the establishment of an adult day healthcare program to meet the VA project submission date of April 15th, 2021, in order to provide the best in care for those who have borne the battle and sacrificed their safety and well-being to preserve our nation's freedom.
Second.
Do I have a second? Second? Okay, now, any discussion on this, or does anyone have any comments or questions of Michael? Counselor Zera?
I just want to say, I'm so grateful that this was put forward. Most of you probably don't know, but I, many years ago, when I was practicing in the area of urology, I ran a clinic at the Soldier's Home once a week. And so both that facility, as well as its residents, are very near and dear to me. And I've seen from the inside how that facility has certainly gone from a kind of a shining star on top of that hill there in Holy Oak to somewhat of a decline due to lack of funding and appropriate attention. And so too, over my 17 years as a healthcare provider in Holy Oak, I had a significant population of patients that would come from the Soldier's Home, whether it be the outpatient clinic or inpatient care. And certainly, some of the neglect, financial neglect that has fallen on that facility was very evident in terms of how that ultimately reflected at the end product, which is patient care. And these men and women who have given their lives and service to our country really deserve the best that we can give back to them through properly providing at the end of their lives and for their long-term care, the monies that are really owed to them, to give back as much as we can for their service. So I'm thankful for this. Thank you for putting it forward, and I'm certainly in full support.
Thank you. Did I see Counsel Rist? You're still muted, Dan. There you go.
I just want to thank Michael, our veterans agent, for putting this forward, and to thank him immensely for the work you do. And I just wanted to make sure anybody watching this knew who Michael was. He's our veterans agent, and he works tirelessly for our veterans. And thank God we have a person like you working for them. Thank you.
Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I am 100% supporting this resolution. As you know, my dad was a Vietnam, U.S. Vietnam veteran from the Navy. And I see, I saw as a firsthand what happened at the Soldier's Home, because you guys know, I work in a funeral home, and I do a few removals there. Every time I went there, I feel like I was removing my dad from there, because he could be one of them. So I am 100% supporting this, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Anyone else? Counselor Kozinski?
I am so grateful that this is being brought forward, Michael. Thank you very much. Owen, thank you for your comments. Peg, for reading the resolution with your heart. The folks who have served us deserve the very best after the end of their life. And Omar, my father passed away in a veteran's home at the end of his life, where he needed some very specialized care. So this does bring home, for me, gratefulness and a great passion for the folks who served. I can't believe that nurse, that the care facilities don't have individual private bathrooms for each bedroom. This level and standard of care is necessary, and I do fully support the measure.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Barbara, would you call the vote?
Peg Coniff? Aye. Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you so much. The resolution passes as approved and supported by the East Hampton City Council. Thank you, Michael, for bringing this forward. And clearly, we enthusiastically support this and wish you well in fighting the good fight to get this money for our veterans. So thank you.
Madam President, I move the public hearings be open.
Second.
Motion's second, open the public hearings. Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Peg Coniff? Yes. Public hearing is now open. Counselor Rist, do you want to start with the supplemental appropriations from the CPA Fund?
Yes, we have two appropriations coming forward. Both of these appropriations were passed unanimously last spring by the CPA Committee. We decided to wait on presenting them to the council due to the fact that they weren't urgent, and the council was about to go into major budget hearings, et cetera. So we bring them forward today. The first is a $500,000, really accounting movement of funds. City Space approached us in an effort to establish a stronger commitment to help with their appeal for donors and grant providers. This commitment would be such that the city council now is involved in, once we transfer these funds, in anything that we would do as a CPA committee to reserve funds for this or provide funding in the future. This request is to move formerly earmarked funds from prior years to the newly established Old Town Hall second-floor construction retained city match account. This account was established with the passing of the CPA annual budget this past June. As I stated at the budget hearing, establishing this account will bring the city council into the process by ensuring that funds set aside for the Old Town Hall project cannot be withdrawn for any purpose, including Old Town Hall construction, without council approval. The savings account is more official than an earmark and demonstrates to potential grant association donors to the project that the CPA Committee is committed to this project. This account will grow until construction begins and will reduce the amount necessary to borrow. The committee previously committed $3 million to this project. When it is time to draw on this account for construction, the CPA Committee and the council must approve moving these funds to a project account. This particular point was confirmed by our auditor. A project agreement is part of this request to guarantee that any future City Space or CPA Committee won't feel the retained account can be drawn for construction. This project construction account, the project construction account, when established, would be a reimbursement account. This retained account was originally recommended by our auditor. These funds remain in the CPA overall accounts and continue to collect interest until they are actually used. Finally, as the CPA has reserved $200,000 to $250,000 each of the last three years for the Old Town Hall project, and also maintains a $909,000 balance today, that's what's in our account, these amounts demonstrate that when the project is eventually bonded, the CPA budget has the capacity to pay $250,000 for the term of the bond each year without affecting the ability to fund other projects. The CPA Committee voted unanimously to move this forward, and again, it's moving money from what is called earmarks into an established account, which we established with the budget process. Burns Maxi is here from City Space, and I think she wants to say something regarding this. Burns?
Go ahead, Burns. Hi all, thanks, Dan. Yeah, if you don't mind, this is, this is obviously a sizable amount of money, and I'd like to just give you an update of what's going on with City Space right now, because we're in such a challenging time. And just to give you some history, you know, as you might remember, in February of 2019, City Space signed a 44-year lease with the city of East Hampton. And now we manage the historic Old Town Hall in its entirety, so the full building. And following that $3 million commitment from the CPA towards the renovation of the second floor to make for a universally designed performing arts and community space, our campaign went public last year in 2019. It seems so long ago. And so far, we've had over 350 gifts from close to 250 generous donors who have come to support this project. This organization did not have a long history of fundraising. City Space, you know, it's been mostly a management entity, and these individual donations range up to $250,000. So we really thank everybody who's come forward to make those early commitments, especially to the Massachusetts Cultural Council and Mass Development, who awarded a $200,000 grant, capital grant, including the CPA commitments and matching gift from the MCC, foundations, and corporate donations, over $3.9 million has been committed towards the City Space project so far. So we're really excited. Before the COVID-19 pandemic, we were well on our way to raising the funds and beginning to build in 2021. But like the rest of the world, you know, we've had to adjust our timeline. And so we've kind of paused our campaign, starting in March. What we did, and we, but when I say we paused our campaign, that has, doesn't mean that we haven't been incredibly busy planning behind the scenes. In March of 2020 this year, without use of the building, we suspended the rents from our tenants of Flywheel, Big Red Frame, and East Hampton City Arts. Can you hold on one second? Excuse me, sorry about that.
No worries.
Little interruption. So in March of 2020, without the use of the building, our, we suspended the rents from our tenants of Flywheel, Big Red Frame, and East Hampton City Arts, the last being a part of our city's planning department. And those rents continued to be frozen until recently, with now only a percentage of their rents requested, as state guidelines have allowed for use of spaces to reopen. And we are applying for funding to recover our losses from the suspended rents. We feel incredibly lucky to be a landlord essentially that can offer this freeze-up our tenants' rents. And as we recover these funds, our tenants will be able to start fresh when they get their programming back up and running. We've been working with our tenants to collaborate on alternative and innovative methods to activate the building during this pandemic, while continuing to align with our mission to create a vibrant place for the arts. And you'll see some exciting developments that will happen over the coming months. We have submitted an application of historic tax credits for up to $750,000. And upon the completion of the renovation, we can receive those funds. We just received our first acceptance of the first allocation of $150,000, and we will continue to apply for up to 20% of that historic we have for the project. As an organization that's in development, our board has been having ongoing strategic discussions, reviewing our goals, plans, policies, and developing really actionable steps to create more equitable and inclusive organization that reflects not just East Hampton, but our region as a whole. And we actually have a good board meeting tomorrow night, where we're going to dive deep into a new cultural equity policy, as well as goals that we're establishing as part of our strategic plan. You know, we believe that right now, we live in these historically challenging times, and our effort as a community to emerge together from this pandemic into a more just world is really a goal that our City Space Board shares. Prior to the shutdown, we worked with local and state leaders to secure funding on the state level, and we are now seeing movement of this work in an economic development state bill for $750,000 for this project. And our capital campaign continues for the second floor of the Old Town Hall, even though we've been quiet. In July, we hired a capital campaign manager. Our campaign teams have been planning for our next steps, and we have been revising our strategies and developing methods that fit a new timeline. And we have moved that timeline forward to the end of 2022, because we believe that on the other side of these challenging times, there will be much need for celebration, as well as economic development for the city of East Hampton. And we really want Old Town Hall to be ready. And I think with this CPA funding marked for this project and a secured city accu- And I think with this CPA funding marked for this project and a secured city account only accessible to City Space once we have the funding in place, this move, what it will do is offer further motivation to funders to support this project, as well as securing matching funds. As we've seen in the past, East Hampton has found economic resiliency because of the arts. And this time, as our city bounces back, which we will get there, we will do it even more purposefully. And with this step, funders will know, with this step that you'll be making tonight, funders will know that the commitment from the CPA is a genuine pledge to restore and improve East Hampton's iconic cultural hub and where our city's history and our future come together right in the Old Town Hall. We're obviously on board for this and excited to see these next steps happen, and I hope that the city council is in agreement to move forward and help keep the momentum going for the Old Town Hall. And I'm happy to take questions, any questions you have about what we're doing, et cetera.
Also, if you have any questions regarding this account, again, it's already been established, we're just moving money from earmarks into this account. The mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, I just, I think this is just a really great move and strategy by CPA. And while I knew of the work Burns just described, I just, it's really innovative, it's creative. I mean, it shows a long commitment to this project, but it's really viable. And I just commend the board, and you know, can't say enough how I think this is just a great step forward to show our commitment as a city to this project. And when we are at the other end of this, Burns is 100% correct, we will have celebrations and we will need them, and we will need a place to host them. So, just congratulations on the amazing work, Burns, of you and your team.
Thank you. We couldn't do it without you.
Sorry, Peg.
Counselor Luke?
Thank you, Madam President. Dan, this question's probably for you. With the CPA money, we're obligated each year, and I don't know if that changed because of the pandemic or whatever, to spend a certain percentage of our money anyways. Does this count as spending that money because it's just going into a different account, so we're not technically spending it? Do you see what I'm saying?
No, it's moving the money into a project account, which it could be withdrawn for the project in the future, and the project is eligible because it's historic preservation. There is other funding in the historic preservation account, for instance, which can be used for any project coming forward, and we are obligated to spend it if we get the project. We did manage the affordable housing need because of the rent relief, and I know there's recreation projects coming forward for open space, et cetera. So, historic projects are hard to come by, but I hope that they will come forward to meet our obligation for the year. But this does not do that. This just, basically, it's a savings account, and it puts the city council into the process. This money, once it's there, the CPA can't remove it without council approval. So, that way, it has a lot more legitimacy, shall we say, than earmark.
Thank you. And then, just to follow up on that, we have enough in the remaining balance of the historic account to meet our obligation for spending for the year?
Well, the historic account, again, that account, which currently has 75, let me say, will have $75,000 in it. Actually, I'm wrong, it has $440,000 in it. We have to put $75,000 each year. So, there's plenty of money in there to achieve it. And we don't have to spend the money specifically out of historic preservation. We simply have to do a project that's historic preservation. So, I'm hoping something comes forward. But all we can do is hope that the people in town have something that's historic that we can help with. Obviously, this project is a major historic preservation, but it's not ready to be put out there to be constructed, so.
Great, thank you, that's all.
Counselor Kozinski, I think I saw your hand.
Burns, thank you so much for showing us the second floor. I think that's just absolutely gorgeous, beautiful. What windows and high ceilings and lovely floor today. I don't know what the plans will be for covering the floor or maximizing the floor, but just absolutely gorgeous. We're looking forward to the project in the future. I, thank you. I have a, do I have a technical question for Counselor Rist regarding the expenditures? My understanding of the CPA was that we have to each year expend or reserve the required funds and not necessarily spend the funds. Val, I see you.
You may be correct. Unfortunately, Jamie's not here for me to answer that, but I'm hoping you're correct because we already reserved the amount of money we're supposed to, at least 10%.
I see Val's hand.
Val, go ahead.
You're muted, Val.
He knows.
Yeah, I know, I was just clicking the red thing instead of the mute sign. Yes, it's, you either have to reserve and/or expend the 10% in each category, so the reserves count towards your expenditure.
Thank you, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
We don't go anywhere without Val. Any other questions? Hi, Ed, go ahead, Ed.
Hi there, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just speak from the heart. This is a project that I started with Will Bundy, and it's been really important to me. And when COVID hit, and I just thought we were so derailed because we were just starting our capital campaign and it was going so well, there was so much interest, and then everything to shut down, and it all seemed so bleak. Because of Burns' leadership, she kind of dusted us all off and said, no, we can keep doing this, and we can, you know, we have to have a new strategy. But she did pull the board together. And thank you, Dan, for your support with the CPA. This money is so important to us, especially because of what happened. And we've worked so hard to get where we're at. We've raised, how much have we raised, over a million? Burns?
Close to a million.
Close to a million, yeah. And I actually think that would have doubled if COVID hadn't hit. So, I just want to thank everybody for their commitment, and the board feels dedicated more than ever to really make this happen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Zaret?
I wasn't going to say anything because I think it's pretty publicly known how much I support this project, but I think what Ed just said really made me reflect really briefly that I was really worried initially too when COVID hit about how it would specifically affect this project. And I'm just both, I'm thankful that it's persevered, but I'm also grateful to the people involved, Ed and Burns and the rest of the team at City Space, to really show both the perseverance and the investment in this project despite a pandemic. And I'm really just, I think that Old Town Hall and that tower up there, I think, has, you know, been a beacon of hope in knowing that we're still working on it, and it will be completed, and it's somewhere that we're going to throw hopefully lots of parties once this is all over. So, thank you for all you do, and I'm really excited for this.
Anyone else? I'll just echo what Ed said, Burns, I am completely impressed with your professional management of this. I think your leadership is really what is going to bring this home. So, congratulations on the work you've been doing and how completely involved and immersed you are in this. Clearly, the love of this space is apparent. When you start talking about it, you start trying to sell it to us, but you don't really have to because we're kind of already sold. But I just appreciate how you have really been so professional and so on top of this that it kind of makes our job a little easier. So, appreciate all that you've done on this, so thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? All right, Counselor Rist?
Okay, before I read the motion, I just want to point out once again, reiterate, that this will put $750,000 into this account. And assuming we approve another 250 next year, that'll put $1 million in the account, which greatly reduces the interest on a bond we would have to take out, not 3 million, but 2 million. And that's why this is important. This financially is an excellent way to not have to pay interest on a loan. When this comes to pass, we can have this money available. So, I will make a motion. I ask the city council to approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $500,000 to be appropriated from CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation, $300,000, CPA Undesignated Fund Balance, $200,000, for a total of $500,000, to be appropriated to the Old Town Hall second floor construction retained city match account, $500,000. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose: in order to add funds previously earmarked to the savings account for holding, city committed matching construction funds for the second floor restoration, and new accessible entrance and elevator project of Old Town Hall.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appropriation for the CPA funds. Barbara? Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Congratulations, Burns. Thank you.
The next CPA appropriation is for $9,900. It's the first phase of a project that Barbara's presented to us to preserve professional records, which are stored in a lot of places, including Old Town Hall, which need to be studied as to their viability. And this particular project, I'm going to let, I guess Chris is here to, and Barbara explain it, but this keeps our records from getting lost. We find out what we have. Eventually, as the project moves forward, we're going to digitize all of these important records, which will make it easier for a department, such as the planning department, to research something that might be viable to their research regarding the history of a certain land in town or something. So, I am fully, the CPA was very excited to approve this unanimously. And I'll let Barbara, and you can introduce Chris, Barbara, who's here from the company you're hiring.
Okay, sure, thanks, Dan. Yeah, it's become apparent to me over all my time that the city has a lot of records, and they're all over the place. And in our building alone, we don't have a lot of space, so we need to know what we have. And right now, we really kind of don't know what we have. So, I reached out to Chris Chartran from King Information Systems. His company does this kind of work all the time, comes very highly recommended by other communities and also financial institutions, banks, and things like that. And the first step would be to have an analyst come in and take a look at what we have, and from her, looking at our records, give some recommendations. So, Chris is the expert on this, so I'm going to let him give a little explanation of exactly what we're going to hopefully do.
And Chris, if you could go into the first phase, which is what this is paying for, and the eventual pre-phases of your project. Uh oh, you did something to your video, Chris.
There you go. You're unmuted.
That, yeah, it's slowly coming back here, I happen to be on the road.
I have a very bad audio connection, Chris.
Chris, you may have, Chris, I'm sorry, you may have to remove your video because you're breaking up really badly. So, can you stop your video and we'll just go with audio?
Let me see if I can do that.
That might be better.
That, is that helping at all? Any better?
We'll give it a go. See, it's a little crackly.
Okay. Basically, as Barbara mentioned.
No, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris, I'm sorry, it's not going to work. Let me take you off video and see if that works.
Okay.
All right. Okay, now, go ahead, Chris.
Is that sounding any clearer?
Slightly, we'll see, we'll go with it. No, not really, but we'll go.
Well, let me, I'll just move it a little closer then and try and be clear. As Barbara mentioned, my organization has over 40 years of experience helping municipalities both understand what they have and the value of those records in historic context, compliance context, and operational context. Every community struggles with this, and at some point, they hit the tipping point where they look for some help because it literally becomes a big project, reaching all the way back to some of the original records and formulating a plan to manage them carefully and properly. So, through a clerk network, Barbara found us, and we began a conversation about what we might be able to do. Step one is analysis of both the records you retain and the spaces that hold them. And a project of 12 days was established to go through all of the records found in all of the storage locations around town, with which then all of the data will be gathered into a complete report and presented for then ways to begin to organize and program the constant generation of new records as they, as you move through time and various departments add to this history. So, it's really step one that gets all of the baseline for the city of East Hampton down so that we can figure out the options in moving forward to organize those areas.
Any questions?
Any question? Counselor Zaret?
No, I'm just really thankful. I mean, as some of you probably remember, I've asked the mayor about this at Mural Speak, and I've been a little bit of a nudge to our clerk about this. I'm somewhat familiar with the records down at Old Town Hall, which currently appear stable, but I'm grateful that this is happening.
Anyone else? Counselor Lynch?
Thank you, Madam President. Dan, this question might be, you might be able to help me with this one as well. Didn't we, back in like February before the pandemic, approve something from CPA around $30,000 for records and upkeeping, digitizing some of the records and stuff like that?
I see Jamie's here, maybe she can answer that, I don't recall that.
I think what we approved in February was a proposal to look at historic structures.
Yeah, not record, structures, that's right.
It was, and it was the files and the record keeping around those.
It was not for files, it's actually the physical buildings. It's an inventory of structures.
Thank you.
That's what we approved.
And I couldn't, thank you, Jamie.
I was paying attention, go figure. Madam Mayor? Hold it, hold it, you're unmute, you're unmute, Madam Mayor. There you go.
That's a way to keep my comments cute, not, okay, moving on. So, I would just say, this request that Barbara has been working on and providing the logical reasons we should do it, I think, are just amplified even more as we're, you know, in an extended period of shutdown and during as we're, you know, in an extended period of shutdown and during the pandemic. And the more access we can provide to our employees and the public digitally and even in the, before it becomes digital, exactly where they are is really very, very crucial. So I would add my support plus triple support due to COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Kuzinski?
Always glad to have our historic records be preserved. Barbara, it's good to see you after your busy, busy time away doing work very hard for the community and voter registration and voting. You look in good health. With regard to the records, my one question was, and kind of following up on Councilor Lynch's question, have we, and maybe you've missed this, and please, I apologize. Have we really done now pretty much all the records that the city has that are historic? Or are we taking it one bite at a time and there's more for the future? Because we do want to protect as many of those records as possible.
This is gonna, this is, I think, this is going to find all the records and organize them. Am I correct, Barbara?
Right, this is, right now, it's really hard to say exactly what we have because everything is all over the place. So this will kind of give us a better handle on what we have right now. So, I mean, I know what I have in my office, but as far as even what's in the town hall or what's in our basement storage room or what's in one office or another, the, you know, the different buildings. There's no place that we can go and exactly know what we have. And this will help us get that started.
Thank you.
And Barbara, is, this is, maybe this is where you were going, Councilor Kuzinski, but I know that over the last several years, we've worked with you to get you some money so that you can digitize like marriage records and births and deaths and things like that. But this is more, this goes beyond the space in your office. This is all records across the city in all the places that they are to find them and categorize them to know what to do for the next step after we find them all, kind of, right?
Chris, Chris came out, seems like a million years ago right now. We took a drive around to, we went to the water department. We went to the council on aging. We went to the town hall. We went through our building, the police department. I mean, we just, everywhere. And there's stuff everywhere. And that, the goal of it is to kind of get a handle on what we have because we really don't know what we have right now.
Right.
Absolutely. It is not uncommon that as time goes by, different rooms in different buildings, you know, find utilization in just storing some of these old documents. And, you know, let's also put the term old in context. You know, you've got some of your original documents, which I'm sure you have already, you know, well protected and identified. But what happens over time is that these layers of records go into these spaces and finding the complete chronology of some of these department records, knowing exactly what you have and organizing them in a way that is retrievable, is accessible. And then, as you have all mentioned, you know, kind of an interest in using some of the digital tools of today to better allow public records to be available to the public. Those are, these are all steps in the process of being more efficient and more compliant. So you can just, you have better access for everyone.
And one other thing I want to say is that, is that we're going to find things that we don't need to keep. And so another goal is to help like Val and the financial departments and know like what they have and what they can get rid of. And so there's more space because we make records that will be historic every single day. And after a while, there's no room. So that's important, too.
Good point.
Correct.
Right, Councilor Rist?
All right, if there's no other comment from the public, I'll make a motion. I hereby request that the full council approve the supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is for $9,900. To be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation, $9,900. To be appropriated to City Archival Records Management Survey, $9,900. For the purpose of contracting with professional records analysts to survey and analyze archive city records.
Second.
Motion is second for appropriation of $9,900 for historic archival purposes. Any further discussion? Sorry. Barbara?
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Sorry, there we go.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. All right, that. Tom is not here, so I will take a stab. Dan, do you want to take a stab at this or do you want me?
Yeah, it's fairly simple. It's administrative code change to change the name, and correct me if I'm wrong, Peg, to change the name of the ECA Plus Grants Committee to the East Hampton Cultural Council. It doesn't change any of the responsibilities and objectives of the ECA Plus Committee. It's a name change. And I guess to make it easier for people to understand what the cultural council does. Is that kind of what it was?
Right, yeah. It aligns it and defines it to local cultural councils under the MGL. So it kind of makes it clearer that it aligns to a specific MGL for cultural councils. So its name was a little bit not correct. But that's the only thing we're changing about it. The, all of the other components of the original 15-5 administrative code remaining intact, the number of members, the term limits, things like that, all still the same.
Any questions from council?
Questions from the public? Seeing none?
I'll try a motion. I move that pursuant to the Home Rule Charter, Section 61B, the city of East Hampton amend and replaces the Minister 15-5, which established the local cultural council as the ECA Plus Grants Committee, with a new code that incorporates and defines the local cultural council as the East Hampton Cultural Council. Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to change the administrative code 15-5 to a new administrative code 20-2 for the East Hampton Cultural Council. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Our motion passes.
Madam President, I move the public hearings be closed.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. We will move on in the agenda to mayor communications. I would like to first say that personally, and I would imagine that the rest of the council, we extend our sympathy to you in the passing of your dad last week. Those of us who were lucky enough to have met him were lucky enough. He was an amazing man and I thank you for letting us share him with you. So our sympathies on the loss of your dad.
Thank you very much, President Coniff. And I don't know if I have any control or ever had control over my father in sharing him. I think he just insisted in his presence of the universe that he knows everybody and wants to know everybody. And I'm sure he is in a peaceful place right now, doing a large meet and greet. So thank you very much for the sentiment. Yeah, so I just, I want to go through like very quick updates on different things going on in the city, of course, questions, but more to get them on the record. And President Coniff, just direct me as appropriate to say, let's discuss it at a subcommittee meeting rather than to go into detail during this portion of the meeting. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Right. So we've gotten our, we got a check, cannabis check from Ensa for taxes in fiscal year 20, but they came in in 21 for about $300,000. This money will go right into stabilization account, the cannabis stabilization account, and will require council vote for it to be appropriated. But that is available now to do so, once the check is in that account. The, my order of August, in the last week of August, to extend the original order closing all public buildings, city public buildings to the public, has been extended until December 31st, 2020. The content, the substance of the order has not changed. The reason for the buildings being closed has to solely do with the condition of the buildings and a lot of unknowing factors around the spread, infection, transmission of COVID-19 within buildings, air circulation systems. We're putting together a request for qualitative proposals to have a, you know, a firm come in and look at each one of those buildings. We are prioritizing school buildings, given reopening and needing access, but safe access to all of those buildings. Many of the departments, including schools, are working with our health agents to make sure occupancy levels are being observed so we are not taxing those air circulation systems. The, I started about a month and a half ago, a work group for people to take a look at our communication systems in the city with the public, starting with our website and additional tools that we can add. I think COVID-19 has made it plainly clear that verified information sources are very hard to come by. And the information that we must be communicating to our residents and businesses is complicated. And it's not solved by a tweet or even a newspaper article. It's really dense information around essential municipal services and public health. So that work group is being facilitated by Lindsay Mailer in my office. Tom Peak is on that. Dan Halbert is on it. Kelsey, the newest member of the Commission on Disability, is on that, as well as Joe Landers, looking at different perspectives, looking existing, what we have, and looking for recommendations for them, from them, you know, in the next month or so. We have CARE Act money that is around communication and that would be the source of changes. I anticipate that these recommendations will be phased in, like what should and what can happen now. Another big part of this is sustainability, you know. And while we have the money to build something, we need to have the money to maintain it. So I'm very thankful to that group picking up that very important task. So I also, the work group that will help with the next two steps of the mayor's pledge, reviewing use of force policy. We have, it's pretty much decided. We've got Rebecca Passa from the CRC, Margaret Turstein from the CRC, Gabby Stevenson, and Jason Montgomery. There might be one more person joining. I haven't gotten a confirmation. And they will work with a consultant that has done this work, policy review, but also racial equity work within not just law enforcement departments, but cities. So I hope to have a more formal announcement about that in the next week or so. Things got a little slowed down after last week. The progress on our major infrastructure grants, so school is moving along quite nicely. We're on schedule in some parts of the project, a little ahead of schedule. Would be happy to invite our project managers, Colliers International, to a city council meeting to go over where we are in the project, if that would so please the council. The voting, we talked a little bit, the polling locations there for the primary worked by, you know, the skin of our teeth. And I do have concerns about November, as many on this meeting did as well. And I'll be consulting with those project managers to see exactly where it'll be by November. You know, some of the paving will be done, but I think that's when they start digging up parking lots. One Ferry Street, the first building, which is Three Ferry Street, is completed, has a certification of occupancy and is 100% filled with some residences, two apartments market rate and then businesses. You'll see people parking behind the building and that's becoming more and more heavily used. The retaining wall and steps that go from the new parking spaces on Love Field are starting to take shape. There's still more land moving and sculpting that needs to be done. Also, the bike path, which is, we're adding chagrines, like the S-curves, on either side of Ferry Street to slow bikers down and make that crossing a little safer. The paving for that roundabout at Ferry, Love Field and Pleasant is slated to happen in the next three weeks. If all goes, the weather's been a little complicated, but there's other work to be done at the site. So things are proceeding. We're basically on time there. On Route 10, the turning lane and the straightening of Liman Road is almost complete. We've got some painting to do of lines and the rumble strips. But you'll see the flashing lights for the sidewalk and that's very exciting. The River Valley Co-op Project is slightly ahead of schedule at this point. And they just received their agreements with Eversource to start putting up the solar panels on the roof and building the solar car canopies. So you'll see that work happening there. We have started work already on the shared streets grants that we got in three different parts of the city. Pleasant Street and Vertically Street crosswalk with the blinking lights, as well as improvements to accessibility and safe pedestrian access at 50 Payson to National Sonic Pond and then up to, up Williston Avenue to the high school and to the park. The bids for that, those projects came in under. So we have some extra money to go a little further up at the park to make pedestrian and cyclist traffic a little safer, but also just a little cleaner and efficient. So we're very excited. This is a great example of having to push very quickly, grant money and approval for projects through council as we. as we got the grant, and we have until the end of October to get it done. So, that is going along at a clip, you know, the planning department, but DPW has really thrown a lot of effort and labor behind this, doing as much as the project as possible in-house, which really helped us with the bids, and will allow us, that money will now go forward and do more for the city. The Main Street order that I signed on the 31st of August, very specific to Main Street, businesses approached my office, the planning, maybe some city councilors, not just on Main Street, but Union and Cottage around using parking spaces or redesigning the streets, as we've seen in North Hampton, and Salem has done a lot of this as well, based on safety and just the width of the streets. Myself and the police chief did not see Union and Cottage Street being conducive to such use of parking spaces, but given the angled partner parking spaces on Main Street, we feel it's more doable. Businesses, it's not an automatic okay. Businesses who are interested in doing this on Main Street need to put together a plan that was outlined in the order and submit that to planning, and have it signed off by all appropriate, all appropriate parties in the city. The, we do have two tents now set up that are stronger than the tents we originally got for appointments. I've seen it used a couple of times already, personnel and having folks fill out applications and paperwork. The tents, just so everybody knows, will be lowered halfway at the end of the night, just to preserve the tents integrity, as well, we are, we might have actually purchased it already, have purchased or will purchase a larger, in commercial-grade tent that took a little bit to nail down, as well, that will be able to last longer into cold weather, and will also have sides to it to give some measure of protection against climate. These tents, the two that are up, the one that is coming, can be scheduled, just like a conference room in City Hall, for public, for public use, like the subcommittees or volunteer groups, and they can contact my office to schedule that. The COVID, COVID money in general, we have CARE Act and we have FEMA. I would defer and encourage Jen, our treasurer, to talk a little bit about reimbursement and the subcommittee work there, or the work group there, and then to our auditor about how the backend of this expenditures go. Before I hand it over to Jen and then Val, I will be putting out an amendment to my waivers of fees and issuing warrants on properties, but, and late fees, and we will start as of yesterday to assess those fees. When you have a chance to read the auditor's email that she sends monthly, it just went out this afternoon, you'll see the gaps in that local revenue. My intent is to get us back on track with the revenue that we expect, to the extent that it will be collected, and look for other COVID-related money, or another source of money to give relief to residents as needed, and/or fill some holes in those local receipts. So, I just wanted to give a hands-up, I mean, a heads-up on that. Jen, if you could walk us through what you and the work group have done as far as reimbursements and use of CARE Act money on the front end.
Sure. Well, the CARES Act money was already applied for and received. I think I've spoken about that before, there, to the tune of about $1 million. And there's another $400,000 of the CARES money available to us that we have to apply for, you know, additional reimbursements on. I'm actually at the point now where there were certain items that we requested when we did the first request to the CARES Act, that were proposed items at the time. They weren't reimbursement, there was a bulk of reimbursements, but then there was a portion of it that was for future spending, based on our needs for, you know, the additional staff and health, and just, you know, tents, communications, signs, all those things, technology for the schools. So, now I'm kind of in this, in this area where, I'm sorry if you hear a lot of background noise, my house is crazy. I'm in this place right now where I'm getting all of the purchase orders that are being charged to the COVID accounts, and Val set up a group of accounts for CARES Act money and a group for FEMA. The FEMA reimbursement surrounding the initial CARES Act reimbursement has been submitted. I received feedback from the MEMA rep who checks it over, and if we split it into two projects, meaning break it down by what we want reimbursed, and then versus the future spending, which is the 75% of the money we requested from CARES Act for future spending, then it would be, it'll expedite the process, because they can give us the reimbursement money pretty much right away, and then what we'll do is they'll, the additional money will almost act like a, similar to like a grant, where as we spend it, I submit the invoices and that sort of thing, and then they'll, you know, they'll reimburse us up to the amount that I applied for. There's a little bit, I was in the office today speaking with Hadal, it's a little bit confusing, only because we have this one pot of money that already came in that included reimbursements, which that part was easy, but the future spending, and then we also have people spending money related to COVID that wasn't included in that initial request. So, I'm kind of in this, you know, right now I'm seeing all of the purchase orders regarding COVID that come through, and I'm just trying to separate them out and touch base with the department heads, you know, just to make sure this is, this was included already, so it's not something I need to apply for in our next reimbursement, or it is. And then, I've been trying to pick a time to rally our work group together. Things have kind of been crazy with schedules lately. The whole school starting thing here was a nightmare, but I intend to get with the group, and then hopefully they can kind of give me a hand in sifting through, you know, what categories these new purchases are going to fall into, and then kind of making sure, going through everything, making sure we have the proper documentation. So, I mean, things are moving along. I'm trying to get a handle for what's being spent, because I don't want to spend over what's been allotted to us for the CARES Act. So, you know, it's just a matter of kind of keeping track of everything and working with the other departments, and Audit's been great about, you know, giving me the purchase orders and, you know, talking through stuff that doesn't seem right, or whatever. So, it's going well. I mean, it's crazy, but it's going well.
That's great. Val, did you, were you going to say something?
Sure. And what happened with the fiscal '20 CARES Act and the FEMA money was, I asked people not to move expenditures out of the budget, because we had been expending in the budget if they didn't have to, because I didn't want a big deficit in the FEMA grant at the end of the year. The CARES money we had come in, but the FEMA grant, you know, is going to be a reimbursement. So, we moved out school money into the CARES Act, and the rest of the money stayed within the budget. So, when we actually got the money for the reimbursements, I was able to close $52,000 of it to the general fund for the end of the fiscal year. So, that will go to free cash, because that, those expenditures stayed within people's budgets, rather than move them out. And going forward, we, yes, like Jen said, we're giving people the account numbers. Jen's approving everything before it goes in. 25% gets charged to CARES and 75 to the FEMA grant. The FEMA grant is in deficit until we get reimbursements. Yeah, and I don't know if you know how long that will take, but it's good that you can speed it up by splitting the reimbursements and the forward money. So, yeah, so going forward, everything's being charged directly to the grant accounts. But, yeah, we did get $52,000 in reimbursements that's going to go to free cash, so that's good. And we had no deficit from it at the end of the year.
Nice.
That makes me happy.
Yeah. Great. Mayor, did you have anything else, or should we take questions from other councilors? Okay, you're on mute, but I heard, I read your lips. Anyone have any questions for the mayor, or Val, or Jen? Councilor Zaret, come on. Your hand's not going up. We'll serve if Councilor Kuzinski.
Mayor, I wanted to...
Go ahead, JP.
Okay, Mayor, I wanted just to say, I know privately I've reached out to you to say how grateful I am for your leadership with regard to the issues of making bold decisions about the safety of our community. It isn't easy. You've certainly grown into the job. I think you're doing fabulously. When I said, when you were appointed to the reopening committee, I felt that you were going to help make the citizens of our Commonwealth safe. I just want you to know, you're doing that with the citizens of East Hampton, and I'm with you 100%.
Thank you, Councilor, very much. That means a great deal. Thank you. Anyone else? She gave us so much information. No questions? Seriously? Wow. That's amazing. Councilor Rist, see, I knew if I waited long enough.
I just thought of this. You alluded to the problem of the elections, and I know you're going to meet with the project managers. So, is there a chance that they can tell you by November whether we can maintain White Brook? Because I don't know if we can put everybody in the high school, and it would be good to know if they could help us, because we were supposed to have kids in the school. So, if we had kids in the school, why can't we, and the teachers had to park, why can't we have one day for a vote? And I'm only saying this because it's hard on Barbara, and it's hard on everybody to have one place. So, I encourage you to ask that question. We were going to have kids in the school, why can't we have this space available? That's all I'm saying. And I know you're on it, I'm just telling you, I think...
Yeah, no, I hear you. Yeah, yep. Okay. Anything else, anyone? All right. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on then to reports of standing committees. Councilor Rist, Finance?
Yes, we were unable to meet last week due to circumstances that I won't get into, but it required certain people not to be able to attend, and I would, I'm hopeful everything's okay. We will meet for the same agenda next week, that's the 9th, at 5:30. We will review salaries and stipends. I encourage the mayor to attend, because it's budgetary. And also, we just got our monthly report from the city auditor, and as that's a standing item on our agenda, we might have a brief questions for you, Val, if you can show up next week. Thank you. That concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Rist. Councilor Gomez, Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a meeting yesterday. We started the discussion about the fuel storage license application in 35 and 40 O'Neil Street. We are going to keep having that in discussion. We scheduled a meeting for October 6, 6:00 p.m., and the public hearing that we scheduled for tonight, we have to postpone it, because we couldn't, unfortunately, they didn't get the legal ad to the local paper on time. So, we have to move it, and because the next two meetings at the full city council, we have two important topics to discuss. We have to have this public hearing in October 21st. So, I want to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the fuel storage license application to October 21st at 6:15.
All right. Motion in a second to set the public hearing for the fuel storage license application to October 21st. Any discussion? Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild? Yes. Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff? My dogs and I say aye. Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
And Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes for the public hearing for the storage license.
Madam President, that concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Gomez. Appointments, Councilor Lynch?
Thank you, Madam President. We met this evening, and we have three on our agenda. The first one I will do is Jason Montgomery to the Community Relations Committee. As we all were on copy to the email, he pulled back on his application and wanted to be removed from our appointment. So, I would like to make a motion right now to remove the appointment for Jason Montgomery for the Community Relations Committee with a term expiration December 31, 2021, without prejudice.
Second?
Motion second to remove the appointments nomination of Jason Montgomery to the CRC. Any discussion? Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Junior Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Now, Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam President. The next appointment we discussed was Mitzi Alzer to the Energy Advisory Committee. She was unable to attend our meeting, but she forwarded an email to Councilor Gomez, and really kind of high level, she enjoyed many years in the business world. She has, is a graduate from Duke University in Environmental Management, and she's continuing her educational plan. 10 years, lived in our community, loves the community, and actually has been attending the Energy Advisory Committee meeting since January of 2020. So, we felt that she was a good addition to the committee, and it passed 3-0 in our Appointments Committee. So, I would like to make a motion to approve the mayoral appointment of Mitzi Alzer to the Energy Advisory Committee with a term expiration of 12/31/2022.
Second?
Motion second to approve Mitzi Alzer, to the Energy Advisory Committee. Any discussion? Barbara?
I do want to mention, I think she's already appointed as an associate member, and then they had a full member resign. Is that correct, Bill?
I do not have that information.
I think it is. Yeah. So, she's just moving from the associate membership to a full
membership. But, anyway, okay. Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam President. And our third appointment reviewed was for Kelsey Hall. We did not have formal communications with her, because we had troubles getting in contact with her, but she did provide her resume to the council, and just real high level overview of that resume is pretty, it's pretty impressive. She is, has accessibility and associate technology specialist. She's certified as a dyslexia practitioner. She is a speech-language pathologist and a teacher of the deaf. She worked and has worked in the field of accessibility and disability for the last 12 years, and currently oversees the global digital accessibility for McDonald's Corporation. Her education, she has a bachelor's from U. Um, her education, she has a bachelor's from UMass Amherst in Communications Science and Disorders. She also has a master's from Boston University, uh, on deaf education. She also has a master's from the University of New Hampshire for Speech-Language Pathology, and has graduate certificates for associate, I, I mean, um, uh, Associate Technology in Neurodevelopmental and Related Disabilities with a dual focus in early childhood language and literacy disorders. Um, is very, very, uh, impressive resume, uh, wants to be involved with the community, um, and feels that the commission fits her experience and knowledge. So, um, I would like to make a motion to approve Kelsey Hall to the, uh, Commission on Disability with a term expiration of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Kelsey Hall to the Commission on Disability. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Uh, Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes. Motion passes, eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam President. And, uh, I would like to move, um, the three appointments, um, to, to the committee. Uh, so the first one is a reappointment for Rachel Phillips to the Cultural Council, um, with a term expiration of eight-two-twenty-twenty-four. Um, Myra Odemee, uh, to the Communication, uh, Community Relations Committee with a term expiration of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and Gabriella Stevenson to the Community Relations Committee, twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two, term expiration.
Second.
Motion, second to move those three mayoral appointments to the Appointment, uh, City Council Appointment Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Hey, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam President. And, uh, the last, uh, note is, our next meeting will be Tuesday, the fifteenth, at six P M. Uh, we moved it to Tuesday because we feel there might be a lot of community members that, uh, wanna speak, and we wanna make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak, um, at the appointments meeting, and, uh, without cutting it short for the council meeting. So we moved it to Tuesday night at six, just so everybody's aware.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Lynch, for doing that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Derby, ordinance?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so ordinance did meet last night, um, and we, uh, discussed with the planner and some citizens, uh, the amendment around, uh, cannabis establishments and highway business zones. Uh, as you can see, uh, under correspondence, we did receive the planning board's recommendation. Um, and I am going to set a public hearing for that tonight, uh, at this time. Uh, so in the form of a motion, I'd like to set a public hearing for, um, cannabis amendments in highway business zone, uh, for October seventh, at six, six fifteen.
Second.
Motion, second to set the public hearing for the cannabis cultivation highway district, uh, for October seventh. Any discussion? Uh, Mayor, yes?
Yes, I'm just seeking clarification, Counselor Derby. Um, the public hearing is set, um, but in, in the statute, in the M G L, it, once the council votes, it goes to the planning board? Or does it go to the planning board, who gives the recommendation, and then it goes to full council?
So it, the, the, it went to the planning board for our joint hearing.
Yeah.
And then, and then within twenty, twenty-one days, uh, uh, we have to set the public hearing. And so now we're setting the public hearing, and just so everybody knows for, for just, you know, the, the sequence of this, our, our intention is to, to review the planning board's recommendation, and to see if we, uh, concur, and if we have any amendments that, so we're most likely gonna continue that public hearing, um, from October seventh, just, just so everybody's aware of that, because we are, we are still in discussions a- around this in, in committee.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Rist?
Salem, can you clarify that? Because we have to publish this ordinance, and if you're not ready, why are we setting a public hearing at all? I'm just curious, because I'm not quite sure, Barbara, do we have to republish if he makes amendments? I'm pretty sure we do.
I'm, I'm probably gonna use the same, the same wording that Jeff has in his memo, and do it exactly like he did.
Right. And if we do any amendments, it'll be just like any other amendment process, where we would have written amendments that we would give on the night of, of the vote. Um, and, and so, and as far as the process, uh, yeah, I mean, we're, we're bound by specific timelines from this, this week.
Yeah, now I realize that, yes. But I have a question. Would you please provide the council, before the meeting, obviously, any new language that's coming into the ordinance?
Absolutely.
If you do so.
Yeah. And, and, and while, while we're, we, we haven't voted yet, I don't think, but I, I'll continue my update once we do that.
Okay. Did we, so we, okay, so further discussion, Barbara?
JP Kuzinski?
JP?
JP Kuzinski?
Abstain.
Abstain? Okay.
Uh, Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Okay, motion to set the public hearing passes seven to zero to one, or seven to zero, actually. Uh, okay.
So, to continue, so, yeah, we, we are gonna, um, continue the discussions on this, and, and if we do, um, decide that, I need, that we're gonna make any changes, we'll, we'll send those to Barbara and to the full council as soon as that happens. Um, and, and in that spirit, our next meeting, September twenty-second, uh, and we are going to discuss this issue, among others, on the twenty-second, uh, at seven P M.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, um, so we also are ready to go, um, with our plastic, plastics ordinance, um, which is the ordinance, um, to reduce and eliminate plastics in East Hampton, looking at thin plastic bags and other plastic, um, things that we use. Uh, uh, and, and I guess I would defer to Barbara on this. Barbara, would it be, is, is the seventh super crowded, or should I set this for the twenty-first?
Um, the seventh of September? Wait.
Of October.
Of October.
Um, what do we have on for the-
The seventh will be the, um, uh, the, the, was it going to be Omar?
The highway business cannabis that I just said.
Yeah.
And I'm fine to have two that night. If that's the only one, then I would set the plastics for that night as well.
You don't think there's gonna be a, a heavy public desire to have a conversation?
Uh, the twenty-first, you've only got the fuel storage.
So, like I said, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine either way. Um, so I, I, I think that, uh, there, there is a potential for the highway business one to, to have, uh, a, a strong turnout.
Right.
And I, and I would hope that the plastics would have a strong turnout.
Exactly, yeah.
So, um, it's not like we haven't been there before, uh, but, you know, I, I'm happy, I'm happy to, to set it for the twenty-first, the, uh, for the twenty-first, October twenty-first, if, if that pleases the, the President and Barbara.
Counselor Rist?
My only concern is if you have to continue the public hearing on the cannabis zoning, they'll both be on the same night, along with the fuel storage. So can you give us a guesstimate? Do you think you'll make the October seventh public hearing for the cannabis zoning? Or do you feel, do you feel confident you can do that?
I, I would say, I, I can't, I'm, I'm not confident at this moment that we're gonna be able to ha- you know, not continue that, um, necessarily. I mean, we're gonna strive for trying to, to tighten it up and, and get our, our, uh, recommendation, um, but, you know, I think, I think maybe looking at the seventh would probably be best, because, you know, our discussion last night was that we are looking to, to continue. So why not, why not I set this one for the plastics for October seventh?
That makes sense.
I'll do that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion is second to set the public hearing on the plastics ordinance for ten-seven. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Okay. Um, Salem, or, um, Owen, can I just ask that you redo that with the sec- chapter numbers that I gave you?
Ye- yes, uh, um, that's what I was about to say, was that the, the, uh, document you sent us was actually an old version. I just had realized that, and so, and then we also had the vote last night, so I will have that to you, so you can put it in the next packet. Is that acceptable?
That'd be good.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Um, Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
JP?
Aye.
Okay. Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Uh, Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes for the public hearing on ten-seven.
Wonderful. Um, so I, I, I guess I'll just do a couple quick housekeeping. Um, the, since we're looking at, the plastics is gonna be October, um, for a public hearing, I, I would like to get an, an extension on that item, please, um, un- until, I guess, October seventh.
You don't wanna, well, why don't you, uh-
Just go thirty days.
Yes, go thirty days.
Give me thirty days, then.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion is second for an extension of thirty days on the plastics item. Counselor Rist?
Isn't enough, you need to make it sixty. Today's the second of September.
Well, isn't it thirty days from nine sixteen?
Oh, I thought it was thirty. Oh, yes, you're correct. My apologies.
Thirty days from nine sixteen.
Okay. Eh, okay, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes. Okay, motion passes.
Okay, um, and it also looks like, um, and, and I, maybe I'll do these together, the two cannabis, uh, items, if I could, uh, yeah, if I could have thirty days on both of those, uh, I would appreciate that.
You're so polite.
Thank you.
Well, that was a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to extend both cannabis, uh, topics thirty days, uh, from their expiration date as defined in the current agenda. Any, yeah, I know, Bill, it's a lot. Uh, any further comment? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Abstain.
Uh, Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Um, Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
And I apologize, but I'm also going to ask, I'm gonna ask for sixty days for the engine brake proposal. We, I am hoping to get Officer Ross in for our kind of final assessment on this piece, um, but we are just kind of, we're bogged down with this, these other kind of big issues right now, so, uh, I'm gonna ask for sixty, sixty days for that, if you wouldn't mind, in the form of a motion.
Motion is second to extend the engine brake ordinance proposal. Discussion? Barbara?
Um, oh, who am I on? Um, JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Uh, Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Uh, Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else?
Yeah, if it so pleases the President, I will move our new business into the committee, which is a request from Counselors Zerret and myself, uh, to opt into the State's PACE program, which is a, a great solar program for industrial properties and commercial properties. Um, so I, I would do that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion, second to move the, uh, request to participate in the PACE program to the ordinance committee. Any discussion? Barbara?
Uh, Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Uh, Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Sure, yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Motion passes.
This concludes.
Eureka. Uh, property, Counselor Zerret. We're leaving it, by the way, the, the wheels are coming off of this bus right now, but go ahead, Counselor Zerret.
I'm running aside with a tire iron, hoping to keep them back on. Um, I don't really have anything to report. Uh, I, I'm waiting to hear from the Parks Commission when they'll have their meeting, so I apologize. Um, it appears that our sole agenda item has plenty of time left on it, um, and so this concludes.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Zerret. Uh, Rules and Government Relations, Counselor Peak is not here this evening. Um, we've, I, I will give a brief summary of our last meeting last week. We started the conversation around the pilot program. Uh, we're, we're in the very early days of just talking about that and trying to wrap arms around what that means, so we did discuss that. Uh, we discussed with Counselor Zerret the request for adding easthamptonma.gov emails for city committee chairs. Uh, we're hoping to get additional information the next time we meet from Counselor Zerret. Um, and we did not touch on the ordinance review committee, setting that up at this setting that up at this time, so we haven't talked about that. But we also did talk about the charter review draft document. That will be ready for a public hearing. We've talked about that for next week. I did want to just make it really clear in the context of the charter review document. So, the, the Charter Review Committee has spent a year going through, literally sentence by sentence, the existing charter. And in order to keep their work whole and valid, when we meet next week and we begin to vote on the, the charter, we're not going to accept any amendments to the charter as the Charter Committee has defined, because it has been vetted by the lawyers, it has been approved by the mayor, and we're, we really want to get this wrapped up with that committee. They deserve to have their good work put to a vote. And so, what we will do, however, if any counselor in the review of the charter feels strongly that some change that has been proposed, they don't like, they can certainly make a motion to have it removed. And then, once we go through it all, anything we remove will be gone, and we will then vote on what's remaining in its entirety. So, we're not going to vote on section by section by section. We're only going to entertain removals of changes and then vote on the entire charter, and hopefully, we can get that wrapped up next week. So, please, I encourage you all to take a look at the document that Counsel Rist sent you, or Counsel Peak sent you a couple of weeks ago. It is, to use another word, very dense. There is a lot of information in there. There's been a lot of changes. I encourage you to look at the videos of the finance, the Rules and Government Relations meeting. They really cover, with the mayor, the rationale around the changes, and that would really help expedite the meetings next week if you have that under your belt and you understand why the changes were made and requested. And I just really encourage you and implore you, actually, to do that. And then next week, as I said, well, or two weeks from now, we'll try to get through it in, in the best and expedience way we can. Any questions on that? Counsel Rist?
I just want to point out, and I want to thank the mayor, that it is on the website under News, I think it's called, and you have a direct link to the charter. And that's for all the public to look at it. And as we go through it, we'll certainly have public comment on any of the changes that are proposed. So, it is on the website for the public to review. The, the changes, there are some significant changes, but mostly, it's bringing it up to date and getting rid of ambiguity. And I want to thank the mayor who's approved this work, because that's one big step. So, looking forward to everybody looking at it, and hopefully, you don't have any, too many questions, but we'll see you on the 16th.
Mayor? You're on mute. Hold on. Go ahead. There you go.
I, I, I just, I'm looking through my, I'm, I'm looking through, through my notes, and I, I forgot something that's not actually pertinent to this topic, but would, would ask for a suspension of the rules at the end, before the end of the meeting to, to just make a quick statement.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And so, that was really all we talked about. Counsel Rist, do you have anything to add to the Rules and Government Relations report?
No, but we don't have another meeting scheduled. Counsel Peak needs to make that to.
That is correct. We don't have another meeting. So, in the, we do have to, some housekeeping, though, in the form of a motion. I will ask for a, I'm going to go 60 days on the pilot agenda topic to extend that for 60 days.
Second.
Motion is second. I guess I can do that. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Motion passes. And thus concludes the report of Rules and Government Relations. I will make just a quick comment on the Senior Tax Workoff Committee. We met a week or two ago, and we are continuing to meet monthly, and we're going to be accelerating that to twice a month soon. And at this point, what the committee is now working on, we, we went through a number of municipalities in the state that have this program, and we've parsed them out to each member of the committee. So, we'll be reaching out to those, those municipalities and councils on aging and so forth, to get additional information so that we can continue to figure out what would look like a good model for East Hampton. So, continuing to work on that. Counsel Kuzinski is working to get some information from Counselor, Counselor, from Planner Bag on potential use of grant money if we decide to do a pilot with this program in a, in a narrow kind of scope. So, we've got a lot of things that we're working on, and, and it is moving forward. So, so that is that. And Mayor, I will now turn it over to you for your final comment.
Thank you very much. Apologies. I should have said this during mayor communication. I just wanted to clarify and apologize for my very emotional, in-the-moment reaction around the appointment of Kathy Gray and my response to what she was describing, and I was getting off of the police scanner about an intruder at her home. While it's a very serious event, it also increased and exacerbated different suppositions, assumptions, and, and quite honestly, tropes around what's going on in our country, but also in our city, that, that I believe contributed to the, the chasm that Counselor Rothschild mentioned earlier around signs. So, I, I wanted to, to get that out there. I meant to do it at the very beginning of the meeting, and I forgot. So, I just wanted to do it before the end of this meeting. Thank you for the time.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. All right. I will take a motion. We have concluded all of our business, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So. Second.
Motion is second. Barbara?
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe. We'll talk soon. Bye-bye.